I will call today's meeting of Rutland Regional Planning Commission, Ported Commissioners, to order today, Tuesday, October twenty first. What is written in front of me at seven oh one P M? And shall we do introductions? We're not as large a group today.
Oh.
You can go around.
Karen Hill staff.
Henry Town Manager, Pittsburgh.
Sarah Gomczy, Polkney.
Jim Marty, Rutland Town.
The Corner, Proctor.
Chris Sather, Danby.
Ronald Spencer, Larnum.
Michael Fowler, Timothée Alterman.
Sure.
Laura Black, Shrewsbank.
Devin Eri, Executive Director.
Mary Corcel, Mendon.
Robert Gins, Hubbard.
We have Barbara Sampson from Sudbury. Erica, Erica Burner from Wallingford. Judy Gilmore from Timothée. And Nick Stargstaff.
They're good, thank you. First thing on the agenda is to approve the agenda unless any changes are needed. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Unmoved.
Thank you, Ms., or second?
Second.
Oh, Dick.
Yes.
Thank you. All in favor to approve the agenda, please say aye.
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 Aye. Okay. Next on the agenda is approving our September sixteenth minutes. Which are included in your packet. Anybody have any changes to be made for the minutes? Or I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes? Thank you Bronson, second. Sarah, thank you. All in favor to approve the September sixteenth minutes? Please signify by saying aye or raise a aye.
Aye.
All right, open to the public. I think we have nobody here from the public. So, right, no one online, so move on. Devin, it's yours for, or no, it's Executive, yeah, Devin, it's yours, Executive Director Report.
My pleasure. Okay. Not intended to be exhaustive, but some important highlights to note. The continuation of the Vermont Evaluation of Rural Technical Assistance Program, V R N A, is hosting a Reimagining Rural Capacity Summit. That's November thirteenth, that V T S U Randolph. Trying to get as many folks from the region to try to attend as possible if you're interested. There is a free registration, this tiny URL. And for those who may need it, they are reimbursing mileage and there will be a free meal. As with tradition, the Chamber in Economic Development of the Rutland Region is partnering with R R P C for the Rutland County Regional Project Priority Projects List. That application is available through the Cedar website, or you can email Lyle. Lyle at Rutland Economy dot com. Those applications are due Monday, November third. All existing project, early projects have been contacted. So if you have an existing project, Lyle should be, should have reached out. And if you're interested, please drop him a line or let me know. Happy to make the connection, I list. And again. What this means is it's not giving funding in these projects, but it does give them substantial advantage when seeking funding to the Northern Orders Regional Commission. So, programs like Catalyst provide significant funding for programs and infrastructure. So it's a great program. Land Use Review Board is hosting a Tier Three Draft Rule Hearing tomorrow here in Rutland. There's at this office from six eight P M. There's four around the state, and this is an extremely important milestone for the Land Use Review Board when developing the rules around, the draft rules around Tier Three, which are those critical natural resources and could see Act two fifty jurisdiction. Again, that will be an overlay over the regional future land use map that the Regional Planning Commission has nothing to do with this effort. That being said, we've seen some of the draft maps. And what is being proposed is not a small area. So we're encouraging especially our rural communities to be aware and show up and offer your feedback. Because this is really happening and being developed right now. Just to note, on a municipal complete streets training, this is Thursday, a little busy week this week. And that's in West Rutland. If you're interested, reach out to Ethan. We are in the throes of our F Y twenty five financial audit. We have submitted everything to the auditors. It was a little bit earlier this year. And a huge thanks to Mary Kay and also Karen and Anna Maria. Could not have done it without all of them. Typical fashion, Mary Kay spent a lot of time here preparing the audit. And we, since it was earlier, we may have the audit report back earlier. So we may be able to vote and review the report in November, which would be nice. Usually we're trying to fit it in awkwardly to our holiday meeting in December. And it'd be great to avoid that. So we will let you know as soon as that's back. Hopefully it's a clean audit as they all have been under Mary Kay. Want to throw out some kudos to one of our planners. Maggie O'Brien has teamed up with Eric Pulver from V D H to facilitate these sub-region discussions for the Rutland Region Disaster Cooperative. And they just held one last week in Castleton that included five towns. Or six towns. And it was really impressive to see them facilitate this discussion over disaster preparedness and response and recovery. And to see all these towns come together in one room and really talk about how they can work together in the absence of a state formal framework around recovery from disasters. And considering the real uncertainty around FEMA right now. I'm really supporting this strong initiative to have a homegrown response to emergency management. It's very much in its infancy, but this is an idea that we as a collective would create the framework in the county to provide support between towns in the, in the event of a disaster. So it's very much in the early days. They've had one sub-region meeting in Chittenden and another one in Castleton. There will be one quarterly throughout the region until they're completed. So be on the lookout. She's done a very good job reaching out to those town contacts when they have an upcoming facilitation. So really proud of her work on that effort.
Can I ask a question? It says the Northwest Subregion, is that, what is that Northwest Subregion of the Rutland?
Yes, so these are subregions of Rutland County. And I can share what those subregions are. They're sort of organically broken, broken down by like towns that work well together and are in close proximity. So there will be one in Shrewsbury that will include Mount Holly and Wallingford and that kind of sub-region. So.
So was that first group actually that group?
No, the first group was Chittenden, which was Mendon, Chittenden, Pittsburgh, Bramden.
Really?
Yeah. And then this Northwest was Sudbury, Ferry, Ben Casten, Hubbard, and West Haven Benson. And it was great because even the smallest towns like, you know, West Haven, extremely small, two hundred and ten people. They had three participants there in Sudbury as well. So it was nice to see.
Thanks.
Yeah. And then lastly, you know, I had intended that to have the select board meetups continue all year round. Big surprise, having a baby really put a cramp in that. So we sort of took a pause after the April meeting. However, I've heard from several select board members from many different towns that they really want to see this resume. So I am going to ramp it back up in January and we'll plan that for next year. I'm actually meeting with V L C T this week to debrief. This was initially a partnership with V L C T. We decided to keep going. They've done one in every region in Vermont. So I'm hoping to glean some more information from them about how it's been going and how we can make this a permanent fixture for not only the Rutland region, but Vermont. So more to come. I'll make sure everyone is super aware that when the meeting's going to happen again. We are looking for a host community. We've had one in West Rutland and Castleton. So if you're interested in hosting, we'd love to keep moving around the region. Could be Polkney, could be Pittsburgh, could be Proctor. And we know, Danby, right, yeah. Anyways, okay, that's all.
They're good, thank you. Actually, I have one more question. I may have asked this before. Are there materials for the Tier Three on like the L R B's website?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. So. Land Use Review Board website, I've got it ready to go. There is. This section Tier Three Rulemaking Report. And so here are the four public meetings. Some of the summary information. Here are all the materials and resources. So the draft and there is a map viewer that can give you an idea of what they are considering. This includes. The road rule as well. So you'll see that reflected in this map. But so we're looking at headwater stream areas, habitat connectors for, those are the eight hundred and two thousand foot for road rule, significant natural communities. Elevations above twenty five hundred V.
I just, I don't know what the road rule is.
Yes, yep. So road rule is one of the new provisions in Act one eighty one that states if a new development requires a private road of eight hundred feet or more, or a combination of private and public roads of two thousand feet or more, they would be Act two fifty jurisdictional, even if it's a single family residence. Yep, it's a massive shift, which apparently this used to exist in Act two fifty. It was stripped away. Do you remember that Bronson L?
It was only applied if you were doing a project.
Yeah.
If it was a project subdivision with an eight hundred foot road.
Okay, yep.
It's never for a single family though. I don't think it was ever for a single family though.
Yeah, yeah. So this could be any and all developments, the way I understand it.
Any development, what was the footage again for?
Eight hundred for private?
Eight hundred for private, that's not, I mean, Timothée has, you know, we have a lot of building that's, the draftways are definitely more than eight hundred feet.
Yes, and those pre-existing, we, I don't know how they're going to treat pre-existing, you know, I.
No, I mean, I'm talking about, you know, new projects, new projects that, you know, the anticipation is, I mean, if they run up against an Act two fifty, all of a sudden, to them, out of the blue.
Oh, yeah.
You know, we have, we have things slated that, you know, house lots that are slated to be built. And, you know, it's well over a thousand feet and so.
Yeah, I think we'll end up seeing a lot of seven hundred and ninety nine foot driveways. And, you know, I think there'll be gaming of this system. You know, we, my, my personal sort of opinion is the eight, the road rule alone probably covers enough to be effective for Tier Three, but Tier Three and a road rule remains to be seen how much land that covers.
Just, just a little bit more encouragement for getting some housing built. We can do as easy as we can.
Yeah, about fifty thousand units might be already come by, so. That.
Oh, yes, no, I was chalking on, sorry.
Yeah, so no worries. So, yeah, pretty easy to navigate on the L R B website if you're interested to see that.
Okay, moving on, was there a regional meeting today?
No, no committees, yep, Regional Plan Update.
Oh, Regional Plan Update, thank you.
So we're going to primarily talk about the big meeting that happened last week. And I would welcome, you know, anyone that was in attendance, you know, Laura, Mary, Sarah, anyone else to offer your feedback as well. So we were the first regional plan to go through the Land Use Review Board's new pre-application hearing process. It was a tremendous effort. I want to start by giving sincere and huge kudos to Logan and Stephanie. Basically had to drop everything and prepare for this meeting because it was, they're basically, you know, building the plane up as it was flying and we were purchasing the first ticket. So we really had to help pitch in, help design sort of how these go. There wasn't a whole lot of definition, worked very closely with the L R B chair to sort of help design something that makes sense and also sort of predict what the L R B might want to know. So the beginning of the day started, we rented a bus from Marble Valley Regional Transit District. It was open to the public and we had four stops that were identified by the L R B as areas that they wanted to see sort of boots on the ground, view how our map sort of actualized in each town. So we stopped in Polkney, Caston, West Rutland, and then Killington. And we were lucky enough to be joined by some municipal leaders in each of the communities to speak on behalf of the community as to why it was mapped a certain way and how the locality interacted and participated in the mapping process with the Regional Planning Commission. So Sarah and Jamie from Polkney were our first stop. It was a challenge because we only had about fifteen minutes per stop. And then it took four hours to get the bus all around the region. So we really packed it as full as we could. You know, the site visits were not formal testimony. So it was more informal sort of understanding of how things were done. It was really helpful, I think, not to hear what the R P C had to say so much as what Sarah and other local leaders had to say and why they envisioned growing in the areas that we had identified for growth. We did put together a series of site packets because we felt like we couldn't just like show up for fifteen minutes and get it all done. So here's an example of how much work was put into this. This is forty pages of site packets. They include the map of the town with a breakdown of all the areas. A zoom in of where the Tier One B areas are. The four communities we visited all had Tier One B, proposed Tier One B areas, which again are partial exemption Sac two fifty, fifty units of housing or less on ten acres less. So we went through the downtown, justified why we mapped that, the village center and the planned growth area and the village areas and how we believe we comply with statute. I will tell you, the biggest feedback we got from the Landings Review Board, both on the ground and in our pre-application meeting post-site visit, was that their interpretation of village areas quite different from ours. They believe that village areas are not intended to be mapped around planned growth areas. So you see the darkest purple is downtown, that lighter purple is planned growth, and then village areas, the light pink that surrounds it. Each of them have a very specific statutory requirement based on densities and availability of utilities. There's nothing, in our opinion, in statute that says they can't be mapped. And we feel as though they're sort of like rings of intensity, right? That downtown is the most intense with neighborhoods surrounding the least dense, least intense and not required to have public water or sewer. So hopefully all of you got emails from me this afternoon, sort of encouraging you all to email Act two fifty board and say, hey, we mapped these areas quite intentionally because this is where we need and want to grow. And I personally felt like the L R B at times was looking for a pretty map versus an accurate map. And they had some issues with the map being disconnected, although there's a river corridor and flood plain going through there. So they can't be mapped as such. So all this is to say, it was, it provided a ton of context. And here's a great example of, you know, it wasn't just the R P C. You know, we're trying to align it with Polkney's zoning map, their future land use map and some of the provisions in their zoning, especially in that sort of South Polkney area. And, you know, include some discussion of future growth. So overall, I think it was really successful. You know, a lot of the L R B members in terms of the site visit kept commenting that we might have set a really high bar for the rest of our PCs that they might not be happy about because we're sort of put in, put in so much work in the sort of packet to supplement the short site visits. So that was one aspect. I think that went really, really well. And then the pre-application hearing itself was a two-hour meeting following that site visit where the R P C presented really briefly on our plan and map. And we tried to really pull it back. It was clear that the L R B really wanted to talk about the map, but the map to us is meaningless without the provisions of the plan. So we tried to really bridge that gap and make that connection stronger. The L R B has several questions for us. Questions on our housing targets and how, how our methodology was in creating those. Some questions over our natural resources chapter and how we mapped highest priority forest blocks and wildlife connections and corridors. Some questions on utility mapping, on our policy language. And then there were comments from the public, some positive, some negative. So, you know, we heard pretty consistently from public that, and from the L R B, that they thought our engagement methodology was head and shoulders above the rest. And, you know, we stand by that. Our engagement report is two hundred pages and we did a ton of outreach. You all know all of that. You know, one member of the public did mention that they were really concerned about the regulatory significance of the regional plan and the future land use map and what this meant for development in the region and that this was another layer of bureaucracy, which I think for a lot of people, that's, that's completely fair. However, you know, that was the legislature that enacted these laws. The L R B and the R P C are just implementing them based on how we can operate. You know, there's callouts to things like twenty two A and V T S U Castleton. Those elements are in the plan. You know, Killington, the city of Rutland both spoke on potentially seeking Tier One A status. And they were actually, Killington was a little bit confused as to, they thought it was a Tier One A hearing and didn't understand that that was a separate application process. So I think we all learned a little something about how the L R B operates, how this process is going, how it's kind of developing on the fly as well. You know, I, I don't envy the Land Use Review Board. They're tasked with a mountain of stuff to complete before, before all this goes live. So it's, it is a challenge. Laura, Sarah, do you guys want to add anything? And you were there, yeah.
So I did attend the hearing and then the next day I actually saw the head of L R B and one of the other ladies, they were up at Municipal Day.
Oh, nice.
So I gave them my input verbally the next day. And also took, they had a secret sauce to Tier One A and One B. Killington was there too, so they heard what they have to do and how it works for One A.
Yeah.
Will was there. So I found it very informative both ends, the hearing and the day after. And I wish that the Tier One A, One B training that they did, it opened my eyes. Like I knew that I wanted to go One B anyways with our town, but it gave me more information that I didn't have before. So I can go yell at my planning commission a little bit more. But, yeah, it was definitely intense in that the two ladies, even the next day, they're like, you know, Rutland did put a ton of work into that, they raised the bar. So I think they're realizing how much work you did put into it, which was good to hear. And I told them from my perspective with you and Logan and working with me and the maps and trying to make sure that you listen to what Pittsburgh had to say and where our water lines were and wastewater. And I said that wasn't something that regional had maps of before. I said, I literally took highway first to the map and even back, going back to Logan. And I said, you know, it wasn't just a, I'm going to have a meeting with you and then I'm walking away. And I told them point blank, I'm like, we went back and forth. There was a very long email chain back and forth and back and forth between me and my select board, the two of you. And I, I said that I felt like we were being heard. It wasn't just, oh, this town wants this, but we were actually being heard. And you did as much as you could for our town. And that's what I told them the next day when I saw them. And I said, it wasn't just, this is a fly-by-night thing. This was taken very seriously.
Nice, so that's wild that you saw them the next day.
And they remembered who I was.
Yeah, that's great, that is really great.
Well, yeah, it was a good conversation. And then like I said, the training that I took on One A, One B was very informative.
Awesome, that's great. You know, I get the impression that they're going to be largely deferential with the regional plan as long as it meets statute. I think they're going to say, hey, you know, we want you to develop a plan that makes sense for your region. I'm, I would like to see them be equally deferential to the mapping. Because I think their eyes got a little opened with respect to how much you all dictated what was in the map versus us just saying, here, here's your map. And how the minutia of like, oh, this zoning district or this neighborhood had a planning study and that is not reflected in this math. And I'm worried that like just first glance, that would be lost. So I think this hearing is, I'm glad it happened, but it's still, it's my opinion, just a snapshot of the two and a half years in the making. So, yeah, Sarah.
Yeah, I think, you know, I would just start out by saying thank you. You posted a ton of work for this hearing and it was really obvious at the site visit. The mapping at the site visit was excellent and Logan did a really good job of explaining the process. You know, we spent some time, Jamie and I spent some time talking about the zoning districts. And we have a utility district in Polkney, which is really confusing in terms of its naming. It is intended to be like a, a use area, but the shame of it is confusing. So we were asked that question. We were also asked a question about the extent of the diligence water and wastewater infrastructure and if that was reflected in the mapping before they left. So it was good to have that feedback. I think, you know, thank you Devin for, you know, really kind of laying out more clearly what took place in the hearing afterwards because I did join online and it was interesting to hear public comment and to hear from some of the other communities that had concerns that they directed towards the L R B related to it. So you did a good job of explaining that for us tonight and really what it means. You know, it occurs to me as I'm providing comment tomorrow, I, I think I need to spend a little bit more time. It would be a little, it would be helpful to understand a little bit more about RPC's mapping around the village area and what you see as the, the concern with the way that they are applying the regulation, applying the statute and then he provided it, but it just, it's just sinking a little bit in terms of that mapping.
Yeah.
But when Logan came out and did the mapping last spring, we had the entire planning commission there. We had the, our zoning administrator, we had our town manager and we had folks from the community. And it was highly interactive. And we spent quite a bit of time in the following two weeks going back with the RPC about specific parcels and that sort of thing. So I think those were really well reflected. The only other thing that I would say, you said it, is that, you know, I think RPC, Rutland Regional Planning Commission has to set the bar, that you know, you are, you are the first ones doing this. So some of the decisions that the L R B is, that, you know, has to make with the review here is going to be the precedent. So, you know, unfortunately, we're probably being scrutinized, but also developing the, developing the.
Polish sword.
Yeah, the regulation. So I think, you know, it's really important that everybody responds and interacts with the L R B, the support what's been done.
Yeah, and advocate for your own communities ultimately, you know. If you don't speak about the region, that's fine, but, you know, speak about what you want in your own community at the very least. Because I, I truly didn't know when we ended up, when we were in those site visits, when she said like, this isn't testimony, I was like, wait, what are we doing then? None, none of my members knew, and I didn't know, leading up to the hearing that. The only testimony they were considering was formal, written or within that hearing. And I was like, oh, we were not prepared for that. That was not communicated. That being said, I think already just today, after sending out those emails, I got responses from a dozen members of the commission and the towns being like submitted, sent. You know, I've already submitted up my comments, so that's encouraging.
Yeah, I think that how important that is, you're expressing again and, and again, part of this event. I went on the bus ride, I had nothing else on my schedule for that Thursday. So I said, let, let me do it. It was, was great for me. I, I think I had, you know, a reasonable understanding of this process and, but maybe not quite and with the Tier One and with the Tier One A and B are. So I really got a much better understanding. One of the other things that was brought up, I think Castleton, right? You showed the sidewalks on these, it was so good. Uh, on these, it was so good to have these packets um for every town in there. You you know, every page is the same for each town for. For me, it was going to, I'm looking at every town and I, I think for the LRB also, this packet was identical for every town. Um, in Castleton, I think for all the towns, it just, it shows the sidewalk. Infrastructure. Remember that question they asked about um sidewalks? I remember it exactly, but. Um, the response from you or your colleague in Castleton. Was so clear about your plans for your sidewalk and. And the the uh projects that you were, that you're in the middle of and the the grant funding that you're in the middle of. So there's been a process. That you're in the middle of, like a five-year process, I think even. So that information really became part of. Their their map and their growth or development area. It was just so important. So I think you're right when these responses are so important to get all that information. I thought that I heard someone say that for site visits, that is a Vermont open meeting law.
It was.
To look it up.
So what, it did mean open meeting law, but it wasn't part of their formal testimony record.
But I thought that that was for for any site visit in Vermont that is. Uh, open meeting law says, I thought somebody said that, that open meeting law says, I haven't checked it, obviously. Open meeting law says that, you know, whatever comments are made at a site visit.
Our public record.
Are not public.
Or not, yes. I think Janet said that from the land use review board, yeah.
Yeah.
That that was the precedence.
Cause that becomes important for our towns for us, you know, how we work in our town.
You're saying the comments are made in a public meeting, which that is. Don't comment. They don't have to be reviewed or recorded or.
They, they are informational only, so they're not. They're not part of the public record.
That's.
I would check the open meeting law.
That's what their legal counsel determined leading up to the meeting, cause you know, it wasn't our meeting at the end of the day and I didn't want it to because of that. Aspect, cause that's, it's sticky and I know. D- DRBs do this now, right? You know, they'll have a site visit and the design review board will go out. Right? It's usually always that after hearing where it makes it to the record. So what the LRB did, which was interesting, Bronson, was they actually. Recited anything of note from the site visits in the public hearing, so it could be recorded. Which I thought was good practice, but yeah, it's, it does seem like it's a bit of a gray area. Anything else, Liz?
Yes, I was, I'm looking up the opening line.
Oh, good.
Awesome. So next, some next steps. Obviously tomorrow, eleven fifty-nine P M is the cutoff for commentary. Well, I'll mention one other thing and it's more of a pet peeve than anything, but I was disappointed that. We had a full half hour blocked for agency comments. And only two agencies showed up and they didn't have comments. And I was like. Boy, I really thought D H C V and V Trans and all the rest would be there. Like, ready to go. And I understand they probably are so busy they didn't have time to read it, but. Um, yeah, I was, thought that was too bad. So comments are due tomorrow night. If you can submit them, awesome. If not, totally understand. The LRB then has the challenging job to coil those comments. Filter them and decide what applies to the regional planning commission. What is a go-no-go and what are sort of suggestions? Those are due back to us mandated by November twenty-first. So. Our plan right now is to try to get those comments back. We still have plans to host, hold that first public hearing. Um, in January, so trying to warn that public hearing December twentieth. That being said, you know, part of those LRB comments can be part of that first public hearing, you know, considering some of those comments. Um, obviously, we want to make go-no-go, no-go map. Alterations based on LRB comments before that hearing because we want it to comply and not. Um, be misleading that, hey, we can have these areas when LRB is saying, no, you cannot. Um, and that's what we've tried to communicate with towns through our map development process is that. Hey, this is what we're proposing, but if the LRB comes back and says, no, we can't fight them. There is no. There's no appeal process that I know of within the mapping. Um, I will look further into that, but. Um, so that's our rough schedule for now. Again, thanks, everybody who were able to attend. Everyone who submitted comments, everyone who's been a part of this process from day one. Um, we are seeing that faint light at the end of the tunnel and it's, it's approaching, so.
Would you be willing to send us a PDF of what we're coming back with? Oh, we can look at it at the same time you guys are.
I absolutely plan on it, Bronson.
Yeah, yeah.
Do those maps, the packets on the RPC's website or?
They are not, we are, we will add them. They are on the Act two fifty website, so we'll make sure they go up on the regional plan website. Um, along with our presentation.
Okay, uh, next. On the agenda is executive finance committee reports. So the executive finance meeting uh met uh last week, October fourteenth. Let's see, I'm just running through our minutes. Uh, we went through the financial update on the financial audit. Same information that Devon just provided to us. The Devon gave us the executive director's report and the regional plan update. That was before the. The uh day with LRB. So, um, it was just kind of uh understanding what the schedule was gonna be. And so, and. Yep, and. Schedule ongoing. And that was about it for our meeting. Strategic planning was on our agenda, but we did not uh any strategic planning. And we had an executive session. We turned early. That's it, before six thirty. All right, uh, next on the agenda is approving uh fiscal year twenty-seven dues. Yeah, it's on nine in the pack. So, Sarah.
Those safety field visits are included, just, you know, and um it just says that they don't have to be recorded. And that all um all published, there's a reasonable opportunity to express its opinion. By any matters considered by the public body during such meeting. As long as order is done, I think. So it does consider field visit uh under the open meeting law.
But nothing about minutes or anything. It's all after then, huh?
Have to go back to minute section.
Thanks for looking that up.
What, do you have the section that describes that?
The general public's insurance chapter zero zero five, common law, general rights of chapter. Zero zero two, three twelve is the. And they did update it recently in twenty twenty-five, just to say that it didn't have to be recorded.
What title is that?
Uh, it's nice, three twelve. I'm looking at statute. Three twelve.
Section three twelve, yeah.
Yes, yeah, section one, or ch- chapter one.
Yeah.
Word soup in my brain. Oh, wow. RPC Volrad, it's a mysterious. Been a long couple of weeks, folks, sorry. Um, so dues. We're proposing no change to the formula. This is the formula that we came up with and changed last year. So it was a dollar per resident based on the twenty twenty census. Um, last year was obviously the big, big shift from flat a thousand dollars per town. To this weighted scale based on size and population. I went out and did a road show last year, met with a lot of towns who had concerns or questions on this new formula. Ultimately, every town um ended up accepting the due structure as it, as it was. Uh, presented um and paid that F Y twenty-six rate, which um as a result. I w- wanted to sort of like circle back. The idea with this whole restructuring was. To one, come in line with sort of how the rest of the state have their uh formulate their due structures, but more importantly. The intent was, hey, towns, if we have this little extra money, then we're not gonna set up. Contracts that aren't backed by grant funds. And we did this last year. We did not charge a single town any. Um, costs if it wasn't supported by a grant. And we're able to support more towns in the town planning program as a result. Um, so I think it it achieved its goal and we're, we're gonna continue to do this um this way. And I think. It's way less administrative burden for us to write. Or have invoices for five hundred dollar agreements with towns. And it's less burden on the town to have to come up with this kind of cash on hand. So overall, I think it was pretty successful. You know, last year we had talked about an idea of sort of. It adjusting with inflation over time to sort of just bake that into the process. We decided to hold off. Um, we can certainly resurrect that conversation for this year. I recommend that we do not increase anything for inflation. With budgets being what they are and towns struggling and the state struggling. I don't think we need any more funding. This was completely appropriate um for the size and for a budget. So. Um, the allocations are as follows. It is just the population in dollar form. I can tell you one other aspect about this that I've heard significant feedback on, which are towns like. West Haven and Mount Tabor going from a thousand dollars to two hundred and ten dollars. It, they were grateful. They were very grateful because they sort of at times constable. Obviously, the city of Rutland, you know, fifteen thousand eight hundred and seven dollars. Less happy about that change. Um, but. You know, any town that has questions, I'm more than willing to go in front of and describe how those funds were spent. And obviously how the work cycles go. Not every town gets all of our attention every year, but we do try to spread it out. But through some of the processes, like the town plan program, you know, there's peaks and valleys, you know, um. When town plans come due, we're there, you know? But you're a great example where. Subdivision regulations by law is town plan, we're doing it all for you. Um, and I think that's, that's the intent is, let's remove the barriers and just. Go do the work, not to worry about the rest, so. Any questions on that? I know we spent a lot of time last year talking about it leading up to this, um, but I'm always willing to. Offer more feedback in uh context.
So is this the second year these rates will be collected?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
All right, we have to approve these. Thank you. So motion to approve the fiscal year twenty-seven dues. Thank you, Anne. Second? Thank you, Jim, or?
Either or.
All in favor to approve the fiscal year twenty-seven dues, please say aye or raise your hand. Thank you.
The next question is, are all those opposed?
All those opposed?
Aye.
Aye. Have it noted, Bronson Spencer goes now. Okay, uh, the motion passes. Next, um, is someone here to uh do the transportation advisory committee report?
Don't believe so. I was hoping Dave was gonna be here by now, so tonight, I think they had a conflict. But it's okay.
Do you want me to talk about what happened at TAC?
Yeah, I forgot, I forgot you're on, you're on tag, yeah, great, please.
Basically, Ethan has been working really hard on the road erosion inventory. Um.
Updates.
Updates. I I know the last time I talked to him, he had five towns done working on, I think, eight more. Um, for this year. And then our last TAC meeting, he went over the five different grants that are available for towns right now and in the very near future. For anything highway-related, better roads. Um.
Transitational.
Yeah, that one's, um. And there's a science one that's coming out, but you didn't have a due date yet and we don't have the paperwork yet for that one. Um, but that's what was discussed at the last TAC.
It's a big push this year. It's gonna do thirteen road erosion inventories, which is. An aggressive feat, but I think we're gonna get it done.
And you did explain the differences for those that were confused because some of them.
Oh, yeah.
Had to do with like pitches and everything, some. Some state regulation change, so people who thought their roads should be out of compliance are actually in compliance. So like Pittsburgh has theirs done. We have one in the red, five in purple and the rest are good, I guess, is what.
And you had, what, a hundred before that were sad?
I think something like.
This should come as music to most towns yours to know. You have to spend way less money upgrading your roads.
Um, so it was good information to hear from TAC and like the explanation on the pitches and how it changed and. How people are seeing the changes in there when you go online to look at your map segments. Um, and that kind of thing.
Thank you, Anne.
Welcome.
Glad somebody knows what's going on around this place.
Think we're going back monthly now?
Oh, it's, these guys are brutal, that poor guy. Then you pitch the quarterly.
No.
He didn't bring it up and then we'll leave next month.
Okay.
Quarterly, so.
I don't know.
I think people just like tax too much. I think they just wanna be there, so, and, well, if you want, we'll do it. Thank you, Anne.
Hey, next on the agenda is commissioner roundtable. Now.
I did not.
Devon has, uh, yeah, okay, he didn't prepare any.
I was supposed to and I didn't.
However, I'll speak to that a little bit because we did discuss this.
Yes.
I guess I lucked this out of the executive committee report, it must have been the gen- wasn't on the minutes.
It was in the minutes, it wasn't on the agenda. Yeah, it was in there, it was hidden in there, October board commissioner's report, yeah.
Um, so, uh, I I'm. If if anyone would like to speak today about something exciting or interesting going around on in their town, that would be great and. Uh, Larry brought up the. Um, traffic speed limit and we had a nice discussion last time. Um, so.
So, yeah.
Anyone else would like to speak, but I was gonna mention um that I'll. Volunteer to give a little, and I'll, I'll keep it short, a short presentation. At next month's meeting on, our town did a, what's, we called a community values mapping event. It was an event to gather information from our community. It was a lot of fun and Nick Stark just recently has completed. The maps that we made from that event, so uh they're digitized and they'll be provided to our community soon. So I'll, I'll give a little blurb on how that event went. It's kind of fun. I'll keep it short, but. Um, yeah, think of anything that's going on in your town that you might like to. Uh, bring up and chat about that is just interesting for us, I'd say.
Or a prob- or a problem or issue, whatever it is, yeah. Yeah, something we can put our heads together on.
I don't have a problem or issue to talk about right now, but I I did have one today for that, I remember. There's a lot to talk about actually, but um I just wanted to share with the board that uh we had a really great stakeholder meeting and Nick helped organize for the. Uh, Delaware and Hudson rail trail, um, which is under, um, it has management plan project that it has been going on for quite a while. Um, and the stakeholder meeting today included several folks from the state and uh. Towns that the D N H runs through, including partners in York. So. There were some uh partners from the Lake Champlain, Lake George Regional Planning Board, um, and other folks, uh, VAS partners. Town managers, uh, rail trail program and several different stakeholders that are um going to talk about. Um, the D N H rail and how it can be used to uh for economic development and. For community development, um, that type of thing. So it was a great meeting, um, a lot of, um. It was the first stakeholder meeting to inform the management plan, so. Um, looking forward to what's coming next and just wanted to give Nick a shout out for doing all that work for the rail trail council as well.
When's that um scheduled to be completed? The management.
I do not know. I don't know that. Nick might have.
Is is part of the planning from uh completing the segment that would join the two? The consent.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, there's been talk about that for quite a while. It's uh, it sounds like a, a bit of a challenge.
Right. Right.
Okay.
Yeah, the pathway forward isn't clear, but Nick is certainly giving it the attention it deserves, and. In the state is too, you know, it's kind of that hidden gem forever, and I think the state is sort of treated it as like. It's done, it's built, it's good, and now they're seeing it as like, ooh, we could do more with this.
Right, and the, the Lemoine Valley Rail Trail is. Has been the first priority of the rail trail program, which was only established two years ago, um, so there's been, you know, folks have probably seen a lot of. Um. A lot of marketing, a lot of use on the LVRT, so, um, it's, there's four rail trails throughout statewide that are under that program, and the D and H rail trail. Um, is, is doing the work that LVRT did some days ago.
What are the other, BB Spurs one, and then what's the third, is it the Mad River?
That, Mississauga.
Mississauga, okay, yeah.
All right, anything else, or?
Is it more generally?
To return.
Where, where does that group get their, where does the rail show get their funding ultimately?
Um, the, so there is a rail trail program through AOT, um, it used to be managed jointly by FPR and, uh, Vtrans, and it is now under the umbrella of AOT. Primarily, entirely since two thousand twenty-two. And there is a rail trail council that, uh, Nick has been leading for, what, a year and a half or so through the RPC. Um, and they are working to, you know, create, um. Some momentum around that, and to bring more people to, from each of the communities that are on the D and H rail trail. Um, into the fold, to, to inform the management plan, but ultimately to have more use and for some development, community development around that. Uh, whether that be economic development or other, um, infrastructure, that type of thing.
Yeah, I think Castleton holds the chair, I think it's Matt Brown.
Oh.
Yeah.
Mark?
Matt, his son.
Oh, I don't know.
Yeah, he runs the.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, cool. Are you done early?
Wow, we're done early. We need to do a motion and.
Or you can just adjourn.
Oh, adjourn the meeting.
Seven fifty-three.
Right. Give everybody.
Bye, all, thanks for joining in online.